Well, I can call this meeting the order and I shall do so. The City Council for the City of Buchanan, Mary will be with us in a moment, but we always start at 7:00 o'clock and I like to maintain that tradition. What I'd like to do first is as we normally do before we begin our meeting, a moment of silent prayer meditation, then we have to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for being here tonight, we appreciate it and we like seeing some new young faces in the audience, which we'll get to in a moment. Pam Parry's begged off for tonight for due illness, so we will be missing her and we'll keep her in our prayers as well. One of the first things we always do is do our traditional, it's been maybe 30 years we've been doing this, we'd like to introduce our Westland students, have them stand up, give us your name, where you're from and what your major is.
I'm Lauren Duncan, I'm an exercise science major and I'm from Sugar Hill, Georgia.
I'm Robert Matheny, I'm from Parkersburg, West Virginia and I'm an accounting and computer information science major.
My name is Steven Seibert, I'm an international studies major, I'm from Doylestown, PA.
I'm Ian Miles, I'm from Hurricane, West Virginia and I'm an accounting major.
Welcome back to Buchanan, if you're second semester and if not, welcome to Buchanan, we love seeing the Westland students here and really that's just the way the professors can actually check to see if you're actually here for the class. Moving on from there, I have no recognized guests in particular, but I did have a Mrs. Strickland, am I right, is it Strickland?
Yes.
That asked us to speak, do you want to speak anywhere in particular or is now a good time for you?
Well, it was about the traffic lights.
The traffic lights? All right, I saw the streetlights, if you'd prefer, we can wait till we're on that discussion or...
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you so much.
Like to hear everyone else's thoughts.
Yeah, great. Anybody else have anything that they would like to say in the audience before we get started? Very good. May I continue with our agenda with our department and board reports, Mr. Doss, City Administrator?
Yes, you do have in front of you the December 31st financial summary for general fund. I do want to report to you that as of December 31st, 2014, our total revenues collected were $2,8,972.12. Our total expenditures are $1,785,323.35, which is in excess of revenue over expenditures in the amount of $223,648.77. Again, remind council that I can give you and provide with you a comprehensive financial report, a detailed financial report other than this. If you'd like to see me after council, I'll be happy to supply that to you. Want to let you know that we have finished our second quarter of our fiscal year, of course ended December 31st, so I will be presenting to you a second quarter report, financial report, at our February 5th meeting. Under old business, a few items to discuss with our home rule and our home rule application, we continue to work on draft ordinances with the establishment of the enterprise zone for economic development tax incentives as well as ordinance for certified and experienced part-time officers to assist our Buchanan Police Department, as you recall, these are two of the pillars within our home rule application. Working with Mr. McCauley, we hope to have at least one of those draft ordinances to present to the West Virginia Home Rule Board. Their next meeting is March the 2nd. Of course, there's an entire process that we have to go when we propose ordinances, we have to run that down to the West Virginia Home Rule Board, which meets quarterly, provide them with what we're thinking as far as a draft ordinance and we have to essentially get their blessing before we can advance that to council and put it back in the community for consideration of legislation. So again, we're working on that, that next meeting is March the 2nd, that quarterly meeting of the West Virginia Home Rule Board. Other than that, just want to remind council that we have a special work session that's scheduled for Monday, January 26th, at 6:00. Items to be discussed are the 2015-2016 general fund budget requisitions. I've provided the general fund departments, that's police, fire, stockard and street, with their budget worksheets for the 15-16 fiscal year. They're in the process of submitting those budget requisitions to me. I want to talk to you all about that, those are due to me next Friday and I want to talk to you all about that on the 26th meeting because there's a couple of items that some of the departments are asking for that I feel council should take under consideration as we move towards adopting the 15-16 budget. Also, at that meeting on the 26th, we'll be discussing the employees' benefits package. I know several council members expressed interest in me providing them with a benefits package of all of our employees, so I will be presenting that at the special session. We need to discuss fire fees, we touched on that a little bit at the last work session. I believe Mr. McCauley is going to present to you just a very raw, rough draft ordinance of the fire fees for you to look at and discuss on the 26th and also discussion of the business and occupation tax structure categories as well. So that is what I have on my plate to discuss with you all at our special session on the 26th. If anyone has any additional things they would like to discuss, if you could just see me after council, shoot me an email or give me a call, I'll be happy to put those on the agenda, but it looks like it's going to be a full agenda with just those four items. Then a couple of updates on some employment positions, our building and code enforcement officer position, I'll let you know that the deadline for that application submission is January 30th. Currently, our office has received several applications for that position. As far as the city attorney's position, there is a deadline for the statement of qualifications. That deadline for submission is also January 30th. Our office has received several inquiries related to that position, but no submissions at this time. Other than that, Mayor, there'll be a couple of items under the resolutions that I'll probably be calling to talk to you about.
All right, Mr. Doss, thank you. Mr. Pugh?
Do you have applications or is it just a resume for the those positions?
What we'd like, Ron, is to have them come to the office, pick up an application, fill the application out if they want to fix a resume to it as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Doss? Thank you very much, Mr. Doss, we appreciate that. Chief Gregory, please support me.
A few things to report, one to council tonight. Was contacted yesterday by a member of Mon Power. Apparently, the utility pole behind the public safety complex, that's caused them some concerns and as a result, they are going to replace that utility pole. As a result of that work, the public safety complex will be without power. They feel it could be upwards of a workday, but as little as two hours. The projected date for this work is Tuesday, this coming Tuesday. As far as the police department, we are planning on having Jessica come to City Hall and work out of City Hall. If officers working that shift need office space, we will also work out of City Hall that day, but in lieu of that, we will plan on being in our cars, working in the field. The mutual aid agreement that Mr. McCauley has spoken with you about as a result of the partnership that we have designed with our neighboring agencies, the Sheriff's Department here in Upstate County and as well as the Lewis County Sheriff's Department and the Weston Police Department is progressing. We have been having regular meetings with each of these agencies, these investigators meetings, and this kind of came as a result of the initial meeting that was spearheaded by Mr. McCauley and really got the ball rolling last fall with Mr. Eelenfeld, the United States Attorney for the Northern District of West Virginia. Really brought a lot of these agencies together to the table, got us talking and as a result, we've been having these monthly meetings. Been very well received, very, very excellent network and opportunities. We've had local, county, state and federal agencies attend each of these meetings. A lot of information is being shared and again, as a result of this, or if you will, a byproduct of this, is this mutual aid agreement that we are currently crafting. Draft of this drafted by Mr. McCauley is in the hands of all the agency heads. My understanding is, the only feedback that I've had at this point is just some logistical stuff, just a little tweak to the rank structure for the Weston Police Department, theirs is just a little bit different than ours, but other than that, it's been well received. There's nothing else that's been recommended to be changed, so I'm just awaiting final feedback from these agencies to get the ball rolling and get sign off by our legislative bodies, hopefully here in the near future. Also, just the other day, we had representatives from Charleston come to the Buchanan Police Department to perform a grant monitoring visit for our VIPS grant, our most recent grant. As you know, we received $15,000 in funding to get this VIPS program off the ground and get it started and that purchased the equipment that our volunteers need in terms of radios, some uniforms, traffic vests, traffic batons and the like. We had reviewed all of the documents, we even had some of our volunteers come in and take part in the meeting and they were very, very well received by the representatives in Charleston. They were impressed that we had come that far in as little time, given that this time last year, it was just a fleeting thought in the back of our mind that we got the ball rolling mid-year and really got it off the ground toward the end of the year. So they were very pleased with where we're at and where we're moving forward at that point. Then the only thing I have is we are currently with wrapping up the calendar year at the end of last month, we are currently working on our year-end report. We anticipate this to be released and I'll report on this to council at the next, the next time I come to council, I guess it'll be the third meeting in February, so I do anticipate having that and ready to present. And I guess as a result, my understanding is historically, these are not short reports, so I guess that's put me on the second page of the agenda, I don't want to go first anymore. But anybody want to bring two batteries?
I plug into wall.
Yeah. That's all I have unless there's questions.
Chief Gregory, how many of the trained VIP volunteers do you have?
We have five.
You have five?
Yep. Yep, I think that's an excellent number, given the small town, what we are and, you know, getting it off the ground. I sweat bullets all throughout the summer and just worried about whether this thing's going to take off or not.
And Chief Gregory, are some of the VIPs trained people, are they also cert- certified?
Yes, yes, they are. Yeah, and you know, we have some good, you know, some good backgrounds, some good depth to our volunteers. One comes from a background in education, she currently works with Head Start. Another has a background with the emergency squad and another is a former dispatcher here in Upstate County, so you know, a lot of depth in terms of what they can bring to the table.
What's the status, Chief, of the body cameras?
Yes, sir. The particular body cameras that we were looking at are currently on pre-order. They were just introduced at the International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference just this last fall and as a result, the company is currently taking pre-orders. We do have a quote and for what that's going to cost as well within the budget allotted to us by City Council and are in the process of getting the ball rolling to get the pre-orders. They do anticipate the product to be released in March and in addition to that, we're also getting quotes on the storage and the server side of things as well.
Any other questions for Chief Gregory? David? I will inform council that there was a, thanks to Municipal Judge Randy Levine, we've come up with a dangerous dog complaint form. We're moving ahead with ordinance 300 to see about the enforcement that we're talking about, so we've come up with a plan and with a form. We haven't, fortunately, haven't had the opportunity to use it and we hope we don't, but if not, it will become the test case on how we determine the dangerous dog situation according to our ordinance. So it hasn't been done in a while, we're going to see how that works out, it's a very interesting way of going about determining that, so thank you, Chief. I just want to let council know that, you might hear about that in the future. Any other questions for Chief Gregory? Thank you, Chief. Tell your guys how much we appreciate the work over the holidays.
I will, thank you.
Mr. Landis or Mr. Arnold? I don't know who it is, Mr. Arnold.
Just to put you in on what you think we've been working on with just one water leak which we was pleased last month, which was Billingsley Drive where the hill keeps slipping. That's the second time it was called out there and it was not due to the water leak, it was the hill that caused the water leak. So what we ended up doing this time is we actually put the two customers on bull water until we can relocate the line on the opposite side, which a gentleman owns a property agreed to pay for the line to be installed. Right now, we're waiting on some right of ways that he needs to supply us with. We actually inserted two one-inch lines inside the six-inch, about 300-foot each on each service, had to cut the main six-inch line down over the hill, a little piece to, I mean, if it kicks a little bit with the inch lines, it's not as bad as the six. Thankfully, the last time the hill slipped, we did cut the valley back to just about a turn where if we would have had it all the way open, we could have probably lost a tank on the leak. But he is working with us on that and that's the only bull water we have right now. We continue to work on some of the tank sites, like North Buchanan, we had a screen issue on top that we had to repair. We have worked some on flood control dam over here on Island Avenue. We still got some issues there where we have to still plate the outside to try to do some work on the inside where to make a smaller gate in order to keep all the debris out of the inside from clogging up the actual control gate itself. We've been working on St. DuBain's Fire Service Line, it's pretty well completed now. We've had a couple of good days, we've been able to work on it. Tenerton Booster Station, we've had issues with it, I've got the materials in for one side of it, we have two actual pumps where they alternate. This one runs first and then after it kicks off, when the tanks fall in the other one. And I showed Mr. Doss what we was up against and he agree wholeheartedly on how we needed to go about approaching the replacement of them. The only, that's about the only thing I have other than we did have a lot of issues as far as during the cold weather, we had a lot of callouts as far as freeze-ups, some was theirs, some was ours. Me and responded well, getting called out three, four o'clock in the morning, taking care of problems. And then my end-of-year thing isn't as big as Matt's, but basically all I've done was just give you an idea of what we're looking at in the way of leaks. 2013, we had a total of 32 leaks and six bull waters and of those 32, six of them was main line breaks. We categorize all the leaks as from service line leaks or anything like that, but the main lines is actually two-inch and above that would cause us more issues. And then we had a total of 3,683 gallons of water that was due to those leaks, but we estimate through a leak calculator each time we have a leak. This year, we had 33 leaks and seven bull waters and, but the total's down a little bit, I mean, we're down to like 1,493,000 on the leaks. But some of them, if you look at the main line breaks compared to the service, that accounts for a lot of that. Bigger the line, the more the water. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Arnold?
I don't have a question, but Tom, I've had a couple people call me in the last month or two that don't have a, they wonder why we charge a minimum charge for the usage of water. And I think it's what, 4,000 gallons a month is a minimum?
Two thousand.
Two thousand. Okay. And there is, there is a minimum charge and they think that, well, if they only use 1,000 gallons, that they should be charged accordingly. And I've commented to them that there's a high fixed cost for either the water or the sewer department, so that we have to have a minimum charge whether or not they even are using water that month. Is that a reasonable explanation or do you go beyond that?
Maybe that's a reasonable explanation. I mean, we have a lot of cost incurred and if you looked at the PSDs, the majority of them is based on 3,000 gallon and there's a lot of people in the country that they're very conservative with water because it used to be in wells, maybe only use 1,500 to 1,800 gallon of water, but they pay the minimum bill. Yes, there is a lot of cost incurred because we read the meters each month, we have the vehicles, the employees as well as all the paperwork and everything that Ambien City Hall does, but yeah, I think it's very reasonable.
And you got the fiscal plan itself?
Yep, and you have to produce the water to go through. The meter itself, just to give you an idea, a few years ago, we was paying somewhere around $30 to $40 a meter. 2014, they passed this no lead law where you're not supposed to have any lead in the meters. We got a meter in the system, it's fine right now, but that meter has to be changed or supposed to be changed every 10 years according to PSC rules. That meters went up to $68 per meter and that's just for direct reading meters. We've only got like a couple hundred that are radio reading meters. So every month, and there's a lot of people that make the accusation, my meter's not been read, but I can assure you that every meter is read every month because there's a timestamp on that handheld when they was there, when they read it. So we know that they've been read and it's just that the way the meter reader can go about it, after he's done it so long, he can lift that lid, look in there, get his reading, drop it back, it looks as if he's not been there, but he has. But that's just a, we had a complaint this week, I'll just put that out there now so that everybody knows they are being read. I don't think we've estimated any this year, have we, Andy?
Then we have about 30 meters.
About 30 meters, all we've estimated during the cold weather.
I got a quick question for you, Tom, or Kelly can answer. Are you aware of any municipalities that do not charge a minimum charge?
I'm not confused.
I've never heard one that doesn't. I think it's pretty much standard throughout the industry to cover the basics. Thank you, Mr. Kelly, thank your crews for all the work they've done over the cold weather. Mr. Rubdo has begged off, Tim Rock is out of town and Mr. Doss was going to give Sam's report?
Yes, yes, I'll make it brief. There were several items, the sanitary board met today on the 15th and again, discussed several items. I'm going to pick out three that I think are relevant to City Council's knowledge. The first was there was an INI inflow, an infiltration report that was submitted. Within that report, the sanitary board updated, updated in the report on the storm, very storm projects and storm upgrades and improvements that they've been working on to remove extraneous flow. So that report has been submitted. On the NPDES permit and appeal, just want to advise council that DEP denied our permit modification, so we will actually be appealing their decision to the Environmental Quality Board. In addition to our appeal, we will be meeting with state legislators on the 28th of January to discuss them introducing legislation to the West Virginia State Legislature that we feel will assist us in our fight with DEP over our NPDES permit. So there'll be more to come on that in future meetings to update you. And finally, there's some work that's going to be done on the Tucker Street, a new storm sewer project that they'll be doing on Tucker Street. That project is set to begin next week and it will continue for several weeks, possibly months. So this is just a PSA, if you will, to advise the folks on Tucker Street and the surrounding area that some of those streets will be blocked off while they do some of that work specifically on Tucker Street. So we just want to get that out there to the public that they will be starting some storm work on Tucker Street starting mid next week. Other than that, that's, I think that works for now.
That's pretty much what I have.
I'll try to answer this.
Well, I hope you can. When I asked, I believe it was Tim Rock the other day, the last meeting or something, about the storm sewer work that was going to be done in between Barber Street and Tucker Street, specifically in an alleyway and stuff like that, that he said that he knew of nothing that was going to be going on in that area. So now, does this project only going to be on Tucker Street or is it going to encompass anything over towards Barber?
Primarily on Tucker Street, it's going to stay on Tucker Street.
Okay.
But there's going to be trucks in and out of the area, so we want to advise folks that, you know.
And that is one of the shortcuts for Academy to, or school time, so we want to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Is it the whole length of Tucker Street?
No, not the full length, no.
Which end?
Just up near Academy School.
From Canaw to Academy.
Okay. Thanks, Chair.
Yeah, 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 that's part, yeah, Ambie's right, it's part of the DOH lane widening project.
Oh, okay.
They're tying that in.
Oh, that's finally coming back.
All right, any other questions for Sam? I mean, Michael?
Tim.
You talked much too quickly.
More to come.
We have Mr. Clem, zoning officer, sir.
Sir, please. Just a couple of things briefly, we've had some severe issues with a couple of properties in town. We finally got the property across the street cleaned up and the lot leveled and so on. That was almost a year trying to get that cleaned up. We've got another one downtown that we continue to have some severe problems with that's still unresolved. Potential owner and current owner, but there's some severe fire hazards, electrical hazards in that building and it's been closed. Power's been removed from the building, that's actually happened probably early September last year. Have some other issues in the building area, although it's usually pretty quiet this time of the year. The other area that I've been doing some work on is security of our internet system. With all the hype and alerts about attacks and infiltration of systems and so on, we want to make sure that all of our customer information and all of our systems are protected as best we possibly can. There is no 100% guarantee that you don't have those kinds of issues now and again, but did attend a seminar in Pittsburgh on security of information technology systems including, they had presentations there from the FBI, Secret Service and several other organizations, online security and the like. Very eye-opening in terms of the kinds of resources that we need to have available and are available to us, particularly through the FBI. But that's all I have unless you have questions.
Mr. Pugh?
Status on the house on Barber Street? I understand that Mr. Westfall did apply for permit and was turned down. Well, legally, that house is way past the deadline for doing anything to it, I believe. But it smells, when it rains, the odor from the charcoal and the fire and everything that was in the upper part of it, the neighbors are hounding me left and right about the odor that's coming from it. And Mr. Westfall told me that he has to get contractors to redo, to fix the building since it's going to be a rental property. Do you have any update on that or anything?
I inspected it three or four weeks ago. Quite frankly, in the building, don't detect any beyond the reasonable smell of a building that's been on fire. There is paint that will be applied to all of the portions of the home that's been burned in an effort to contain that, that's pretty traditional. There's a couple of beams in the roof that need to be planted with probably a two by six on each side or at least on one side. Very little damage structurally to the house itself. Mr. Westfall is in fact, working on the building and has, his primary concern on the contractor was for electrical work, not for the actual building itself. But he's in the process of working on it. He has retained contractor to help him with some elements of it, but it seems to be an in-process project and I'm sure once he gets some of the windows in and some of the structural stuff done, proceeds will fasten.
Does he obtain permits for all of this?
I haven't checked recently, but he has to have.
Well, I know, he has to have them, he had to have them when he was doing the work for the six years before that fire happened too. When he was taking everything out of the building that was there when the previous owner had it and doing construction work on it and everything, and that was a long, drawn-out part. And we in the neighborhood are really just concerned the fact that it's going to stay the way it is for another six years if Mr. Westfall... if Mr. Westfall continues to do the work himself. A little heartened by the fact that he thought he might be able to get a contractor to do it. But it's one of those eyesores is becoming more prominent in that particular neighborhood, as you're well aware, there's some of the houses there. And my neighbors, I don't look at it that often, but I've got neighbors that live right around that that are constantly hounding me about it, and that's the problem with that part. And I know you understand that too.
Any other questions for Mr. Clemens?
I have a couple comments. Rich, I know the housing enforcement side of what you have done for many, many years is probably one of the least favorable occupations in the city. You have to come to the meetings and basically provide information to the Housing Enforcement Board that a piece of property is not meeting the standards of the codes and so forth. And, you know, we look back on what happened with Richie and Tucker Street and the years we were involved with that. I know you're retiring the end of June, but it might be helpful, from your perspective, to provide the council and the enforcement board, what are the greatest challenges that this position has and the city has in getting things done on a timely basis? And the necessary follow-up that's going to be required if we indeed want to enforce these ordinances and codes and statutes? That's one of my personal frustrations, that we don't seem to be on top of those. You know, you've got ninety days to do this, okay, the ninety days is up and it's not getting done. But from your perspective, I think it'd be helpful for you to really sort of provide what are the greatest challenges that you see and have seen, and we need to move forward. If indeed we want to have an enforcement for bad dogs, it doesn't do any good if you don't enforce it. And I see this in the same way. I'd also suggest that we do have a housing enforcement meeting, we haven't had one for five or six months. And I think that's important for us to do. And part of the home rule that we've agreed to do is to provide the city with a little bit of potential opportunity to get money, quite frankly, to build a fund up so that we can do some things that we currently can't do. So I would ask Rich, I mean, he's been doing this for years, and there's got to be challenges and frustrations, and let's get some recommendations from him.
There's actually three or four things that are right, and it's the right timing. Number one, the housing enforcement officer as such has never really had a budget. So you haven't put any money behind the desire to get rid of some of these properties. In my tenure doing this job, there's only been a couple of properties that the city has actually gotten to the point that they took them down, the city itself took them down. The problem is, we've never gotten a dollar back from any of those actions. And that's an issue, that's not only an issue for Buchanan, that's an issue for anybody. So to some extent, you got to go look for some funding to actually do these things. And I think, number two, which is going to be very helpful if you get it in place, is the home rule, be able to go in and actually ticket somebody and demand a payment within X number of days or whatever if in fact it's not done. Right now, all we can do is apply a lien, and we've been in that trap more than once. The city's been in that trap where you can apply a lien, but you're never going to save money. It's going to go through the court system. Property gets sold or what have you, and it's just, it's never-ending. There's two other areas that I think are really going to help. One is, there have been some very significant changes in the state law, which actually became in effect July one, 2014, which requires a lot of attention to residential properties. Prior to 2014, you did not have a great deal of emphasis. We always have been very close to watch commercial properties. We have more authority on commercial properties because they typically require an occupancy permit. And consequently, when a commercial property is nearing completion, whether it's a new building or remodel or whatever it happens to be, whether it's a hospital or retail establishment or auto body shop, they have to have their plans submitted and approved by a state farm marshal. And the city of Buchanan requires that we also have a letter from the contractor, or not contractor, but architect or engineer that says in fact that that was built according to code. And we can enforce those, and we can and do hold their occupancy permit until we receive those documents. Now, that's not an inspection on our part, but it is a requirement that they meet certain minimum standards as far as the state's concerned. State has increased that now that you have to have an occupancy permit for everything, including residential property, including single and duplexes and so on. That raises the state considerably. It's going to be much more demanding in terms of building codes and so on. The other thing is, I have been grandfathered in, because I started this job back about 1985 someplace, in terms of being certified by the state. I attended a number of classes for building code enforcement and so on, but I'm the very first one to say I am not certified by the state to manage and enforce building codes. My replacement will be, that's a requirement of the job now. It's no longer, it can't be grandfathered in. So I think those four areas are going to do a tremendous amount to, and we're going to have to ease into it. This is not the kind of thing you're going to have, be able to change overnight. But we have some absolute gross violations of building codes and health standards and the like within some owner-occupied homes in this town. We do have some leverage over the rental properties, but even that's somewhat minimal, or has been minimal until now.
Well, Rich, I would ask council that, you know, in the next thirty days, that we have an enforcement, Housing Enforcement Board meeting, and that you have provided in the past a list of five or ten or fifteen properties, and you sort of ranked them in priority about, these are things that we must get done. Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, I actually have one scheduled next week.
All right.
Before the consolidated meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, and you have.
I think the other reason we missed the last one was weather.
And you have a, you have a list prepared to?
I always have a list prepared. And one of the problems is, you know, when you talk about that list, you know, we get five, ten, fifteen, or, you know. But if you want to look at housing within the city right now, particularly residential housing, we probably have, and this is a guesstimate based upon driving around and trying to keep track of homes and so on. But I would say we have a hundred to 150 vacant homes in the city. And some of them are absolutely deplorable. Some of them that are occupied are absolutely deplorable. And, you know, it's somewhat difficult to convince people that they ought to keep up their own property. But it does impact the neighboring property, not only how they keep the outside, but how they keep the inside as well.
Do you think there's over a hundred?
Very easily, yeah. You'd be amazed how many vacant homes there are in this town.
Mr. Clemens, first of all, I wanted to say I hope your wife is feeling better and healing after her accident.
She's doing much better, thank you.
Okay, good, don't worry, send the look. The next thing is, I had sent an email out last week or something about the, and you said you'd look into it over that way, did you go by?
Yeah, about eight inches of snow on the top of that right after that, and in fact, the next day. So I did not make it over then, and I've been a little busy with my housekeeping duties.
Yes.
But I will get to it. I've got another complaint today, and it's supposed to hit fifty this weekend, so maybe we'll get all of that stuff linked up. I will tell you, and I don't know in that particular case, although I've had that particular name before, people need to realize that when they pile stuff out along the road, just because they're tired of looking at it, the neighbors get real tired of looking at it. But a lot of the times, the reasons it stays is because they owe us money. The city does not go out and pick up this stuff for free. I mean, they, certainly, they have their trash bill every week, but if they don't, if they are in arrears on their water bill or the utility bill, we're not sending a crew out to now pick up a mound of trash in their front yard. So, you know, if you see a pile of trash piled up, and it's there, and it's there, and it's there, it's not, and they may not call us. I mean, we can't, we can't just drive around and pick this stuff up. You know, if we start that, boy, everybody just stop paying their bill, and we throw it out, and then we pick it up for free. So unfortunately, it's usually the case where an individual has moved in arrears, just stuck it with us, whatever the case may be.
If they actually moved and have a bunch of junk and trash out there, you know, that's one of the things that if we have this fund eventually with the home rule, we could go pick that up. That's part of the.
You know, a lot of times, quite frankly, and Ambien can we, and add to this if she likes, but quite frankly, a lot of our non-paying customers are repeat non-paying customers. And they may move, but they don't move that far, and so they'll come back in with another family member and sign up for services again, and then we get stuck with the bill. We had a gentleman in here, I guess it was right after, yeah, it was right after Christmas. You know, it's an entertaining job sometimes, but this gentleman came in, and he was in tears on the other side of the window. It turned out I was the, I guess I was the only supervisor in the building at the moment, so I had to talk to him. But it was, you know, sad story about how he didn't have any money to pay his water bill. He had all these Christmas bills, where she's standing there in a brand-new outfit. It looked like he hadn't missed too many meals, kind of like me, and yet he didn't have money to pay his water bill. And he was all upset because his mother was ill, and they had no water. You know, I'm sorry, but we can't just give this stuff away. It costs money to process the water, it costs money to send trucks out to pick up the trash, it costs money to take it to the landfills, it costs money to dump it there, and so on. And somehow, people just think, well, the city will take care of it. That's a difficult predicament we get into in many cases.
How long must the neighbors and the other citizens that are good-paying customers suffer with the bad-paying customers garbageing trash in his yard before the city will pick it up and turn it away?
Give me a budget, I'll be glad to pick it up tomorrow.
So in other words, just going to stay there forever without a budget?
What we can't say is we do not have a policy addressing that, and that would include funding it. Am I correct? We have no policy in place if they fail to.
There are cases where, you know, I will go in and authorize, but I don't do that very often.
I think that's one of the issues we really have to take a serious look at in the future.
Well, you know, if my neighbor across the street, right in front of my house, put stuff out and they hadn't paid their bill for six months, and it was just stuck there, and they moved, I'd be rather upset as a taxpayer that the city is not taking that trash away. There seems to be some responsibility for the city, whether budgeted or not, that a truck can be sent up that way and picked it up and hauled it away after a certain period of time. Whether it be a month or whatever, are we going to let it just sit there and become smelly and rot and everything else? Or are the neighbors going to have to get together and shovel it into the back of their car and go with it?
Why don't we bring that up with the Consolidated Board?
No, he brings up a good point.
It's a question that I'm sure everybody, if they're in that situation, would feel the same way.
Any other questions for Mr. Clemens or comments? Thank you, Rich, we appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Mr. McCauley, see you, Tony?
Thank you, a few updates. I mentioned to you at the December eighteen meeting that we had everything wrapped up in the Angus lawsuit, except receiving the dismissal order, and I think it was that next day that it arrived at City Hall, and it's in your packet. So as a matter of finality, that dismissal order has ended that case. I'm almost apprehensive to knock wood and say we don't have any current litigation pending, because that means tomorrow we'll probably get sued twice. But it's, in my thirty-two-year tenure, there have been very few times when I could say we don't have a pending litigation. And I don't think we have any right now, unless you're going to talk about the situation with Mr. Lublo's case in Charleston. That's really not a court case, so I think we're in good shape right now. A couple of other updates, and then the main thing I want to talk to you about is the, just this fairly rough draft of the Fire C ordinance. I would ask you, Mr. Edwards, if the council might not move to authorize you to execute the mutual aid agreement, assuming that there aren't any substantial changes requested by any of the other entities. Chief Gregory mentioned the very minor language that the city of Weston has already requested, and I think their city attorney has weighed in with that, and we're expecting formal approval from them anytime now. And I think he's also had some discussion with Sheriff Kaufman, who thinks the thing is fine, that I think he wants to run it past Mr. Godwin first, and hopefully the folks in Lewis County will be on board too. But rather than have to wait, if you get approval from everybody else here in just the next few days, if you can be authorized to sign that, I would love to be able to have that in place when Mr. Elenfold comes back on February two for the next big meeting. So if that's the will of the council, I'd sure encourage you to authorize that execution.
It's just a resolution, right?
Well, this is a rough copy, is this just a rough draft, or are you fairly resolute, except for the suggestions made by the other two entities that this is going to be your final?
The document that I went over with you last time was a draft, but it was what I was proposing as a final draft, subject to the other entity's approval. What I'm hearing from Chief Gregory is, is there's been preliminary thumbs up from everybody, and rather than have to wait, you do this meeting in February, if they all come back in the next three weeks at some point and say, yeah, we're signing it, here it is, I'd like you to be authorized to sign it on behalf of Buchanan.
Does everyone on the council understand what Dave's asking for?
No. Point it to me, I'm either missing it, or it's not in my. Well, that's why I turned it over. Let me scan over it real quick.
It's the same document that I went over.
We had the opportunity to review it, see if there's anything that we saw.
Right, okay.
There's no cost involved in this yet.
No, this is not, I want to be sure that we're clear on this. This is just the next step in what could evolve as a formal drug and violent crimes task force. But this does not establish that yet. So it's not as though, oh gee, you guys have got to come up with, as a result of executing this, you got to come up with $200,000 next month or something like that, that's on down the pike. That's separate and apart from this. This just formalizes the opportunity of these four police agencies, together with the state police, to work together to do what they're already doing informally anyway, which is having this investigative sharing on a monthly basis. If there was a situation, let's say there's going to be a major drug raid on the Lewis Upsher County line, and all of the agencies were going to be involved. This allows our officers to be dispatched across the Lewis Upsher County line to help out their brethren with the Weston Police Department and the Lewis County Sheriff's Department. And conversely, if we had something big that happened here, and then. And conversely, if we had something big that happened here, and it wouldn't have to be a drug bust, it could be terrorist activity, a shooting, something like that, they can come here without liability concerns, because we would have this all legitimized by this agreement. That's the reason I'd really like to get this done sooner than later, sooner the better.
Does this take a motion?
It does.
I think we should do it, but you know, this, 50 years from now, these law enforcement agencies will all be under one operation anyway.
Oh, maybe not that long. I would like to make the motion that we allow the mayor to apply his signature to the mutual aid agreement at such time as it becomes necessary.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Prose and sign. Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. McCauley?
We've got another meeting tomorrow with Peter Brown on the Suden Lake franchise stuff. I think all of the fence stuff at the top of Cemetery Hill has been resolved. Working on some property matters, the Deer Creek deed has still not been finally finalized, but it's almost there. Ordinances 385, 386, and 387 that were passed on final reading at your December 18 meeting will all go into effect this Sunday, January 18, so that's just a, it's about to happen. Mr. Thomas asked about the 2,000-gallon minimum water thing. That is pretty much standard fare that the Public Service Commission requires municipalities to put in their tariff. And I don't know how many water cases I've done since May of 83, but there's been a few. And that's just their stock standard kind of thing. As Kelly Arnold indicated, you could probably go to even a higher minimum if you wanted to, but I'm not aware of a lower than 2,000-gallon minimum. There may be, and it's something that could be looked at, but when you start to think about 2,000 gallons over a 30-day period, you're only talking about 63 gallons a day, and I don't know how many gallons every time you flush a commode, or, you know, do a load of laundry, but it adds up pretty quickly, pretty substantially. So 2,000 gallons isn't a whole lot of water. Just one other quick thing, I think I mentioned this, but Mr. Elenfold will be here February 2. Matt's investigative meeting is February 4, February 2, February 4, so we may try to consolidate those two meetings together. And as a consequence of that consolidation, since the folks in Weston were supposed to host the next one, Mr. Edwards, that meeting could possibly be moved over to Weston. So we'll keep you posted on that, but we'll see how that goes. Now, the main thing that I've got to discuss with you this evening is this ordinance, which is in, my two little grandsons were at the house the other night, and I made them chocolate-chip cookies, and they bit into it, and they both kind of grimaced. It wasn't done, I had to put it back in the oven. I'm telling you right now, these cookies aren't done. We've got a little bit more to do with this, but I think this is a good skeleton of if it's the will of the council ultimately, as you take up your matters on January 26 and into the 1st of February. I've got this tentatively down for a first reading on your first meeting in February, the February 5 meeting. That's probably aggressive, but in any event, I'm not going to read all the whereas's, but I will give you a little history lesson. Buchanan established its first fire protection fees way back in 1966. So we're coming up fast on 50 years of charging residents and the businesses of Buchanan for fire protection. Now, from '86 until the end of 1982, the quantity of the fee was determined by a multiplier, .002 of property value. That was the manner by which the fire fee was calculated, and then whatever that fee was, that was an annual fee, divide by 12, and you'd pay it. The West Virginia Supreme Court of Appeals, in a case brought against the City of Wheeling in 1982, declared in that litigation that the use of assessor-generated property values to establish what fire fees would be allowed to be charged by municipalities was unconstitutional in the state of West Virginia. There are other states that still use that criteria, but it's not permitted in the state of West Virginia. So there had to be a change made. There was an emergency ordinance done, which was ordinance 222 of the City of Buchanan, which was put into place, the new rates based upon a combination of flat rates for residents, $1.50 a month, and then on businesses, depending upon the revenue of the business, which were both authorized means, the Supreme Court of Appeals in that Wheeling case said, there are other ways to do this, but you can't do it this way, basically. So Buchanan used a hybrid method, where relative to residents, a fee actually of $2 per month was charged, and then the fluctuating depending upon the amount of revenue against businesses. About six months into that cycle in 1983, actually it's five months, it was in May of '83, because that's when I came to Buchanan, one of the first things at meetings I attended on June 2 was a final reading of ordinance 224, which reduced the amount of the resident fee from $2 a month to $1.50 a month. So there hasn't been an increase in the fire fees in Buchanan since January 1 of 1983. There's been one action taken about five months into the process, but that was to reduce it from $2 a month to $1.50 a month for residents. During the last now 32-plus years, it's been $1.50 a month for all residential dwelling houses. It doesn't make any difference whether it's a 12-by-40 trailer, or whether it is a Taj Mahal place with 8,000 square feet. If it's a residence, it's $1.50 a month. The model which you have before you tonight would be a tiered model based upon square footage. Mr. Doss has spent a good bit of time coming up with some of these provisions that I have incorporated into this ordinance, and I think any good ordinance probably doesn't completely reinvent the wheel. This is actually very close to being the model that Bridgeport has used for some time now. Just quickly, I'm going to read those whereas paragraphs, because I think it's good stuff for everybody to be aware of. Whereas the Council of the City of Buchanan, since March 21, 1966, through the enactment of ordinances number 137, 222, and 224, has provided for the imposition and collection of fees for the city's fire department, providing fire protection services throughout Buchanan's corporate limits, and whereas the City of Buchanan is specifically authorized pursuant to Chapter 8, Article 13, Section 13A of the West Virginia Code as amended, to provide emergency fire service protection within the corporate limits of the City of Buchanan, and to impose by ordinance upon the users of the service such reasonable rates, fees, and charges to be collected in the manner specified by ordinance, and whereas the Council heretofore ordered the reconstruction and increase of said fee effective July 1, 2015, and now desires to amend and revise ordinance number 225 in accordance with its prior direction. Now therefore, be it ordained and enacted by the Council of the City of Buchanan, as follows. First, as it's been called since 1966, this ordinance shall continue to be known as the City of Buchanan's Fire Protection Service Fee Ordinance. And then it's just going to take me another couple of minutes to read these findings of council. Council of the City of Buchanan hereby makes the following findings. A, the City of Buchanan has operated a municipal fire department for many decades. However, the city council has not increased its fire protection service fees in Buchanan since January 1, 1983. B, the city's costs and expenses in providing the reasonable and necessary personnel, training, vehicles, and equipment to offer fire protection service for the community have increased substantially during the past 32-plus years. C, previously, and at all times since January 1, 1983, and beginning with the city's effectuation of ordinance number 222, the city's fire protection service fees have been established on a flat-rate basis for all residential properties, and on a revenue-generated basis for commercial properties. D, a number of other West Virginia municipalities currently establish their fire protection service fees based upon the square footage of improvements, that is buildings and other structures, versus flat rates for residential properties or revenue-generated models for commercial properties. E, the city council now believes that the adoption of a square-footage model shall prove more fair and equitable to the residents and businesses of the City of Buchanan versus the flat rate and revenue-generated models. F, the express purpose and intention of this ordinance is to substantially increase the total revenues realized by the City of Buchanan for providing fire protection services within the corporate limits. Then what follows, under Article 3, would be the proposed fee rates, and under the residential, there are two different models that tie in with square footage. Any property consisting of 2,500 square feet or less, the fee would be $3 a month, which is twice the current rate, or in the case of dwelling houses, mobile homes, apartments that are more substantial in size, 2,501 square feet or more, it would be a fee of $5 per month. When we get into the commercial structure under B of this Article 3, there are more tiers. The first tier is a fee of $12.50 per month against each commercial, industrial, or other non-residential building or structure consisting of 2,500 square feet or less. Two, a fee of $25 per month against each commercial, industrial, or other non-residential building or structure consisting of 2,501 square feet but not exceeding 7,500 square feet. The next tier is $50 a month for buildings exceeding 7,501 square feet but not exceeding 22,500 square feet. And then finally, if you exceed 22,500 square feet, it would be a fee-formular rate of 4.5 cents per square feet divided per month, with the maximum fee being permitted against any particular property owner/entity of $1,500 a month. If you do the math real quickly, that means that West Virginia Wesleyan College, that I'm told pays about $5,000 a year, their annual fee would go up to $18,000 a year. Similarly, Walmart, which pays $15 a month for everything that goes on at Walmart, $180 a month, Walmart's fire protection fee is going to be increased to $18,000 a year. As you look at your models to generate revenue, as you start looking at the bigger structures at places like St. Joseph's Hospital, the high-rise, and West Virginia Wesleyan College, Walmart, Lowe's, those entities are going to see a very substantial increase in fire fees. So that's the model that is before you, that's the one that Mr. Doss understood the council to want to start pursuing. I will tell you, I'm pretty comfortable with the first three articles. I did some cutting and pasting with regard to Articles 4 and 5 that I just think need a little more tinkering with and some language clarifications. We may want to add a definitions section to this, but again, I think it's more than half-baked, but not yet fully ready to consume. So maybe between now and your meeting on January 26, and then even into your first meeting in February, if maybe council could take a look at this and start processing whether this is the direction you want to go, that would be a good next step. That's all I have. I've talked too long already with a sore throat this evening, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have about this draft.
You used 18,000 as the cap.
Yes, if the maximum fee would be $1,500 per month, if you times that by 12, the most that you would exact under this draft from any single entity would be $18,000. $1,500 a month times 12 would be $18,000.
Because square footage for Wesleyan would be, you know, there's nothing compared to it in our city because of the residential halls and all the buildings they have. So I don't want them to have a heart attack saying they're going to have to pay X amount of dollars based on the number of square feet they have. It's capped at 18,000.
It's capped at a maximum under this draft model, no one, Walmart, St. Joseph's Hospital, West Virginia Wesleyan College, nobody would pay more than $1,500 a month. Now, that's a substantial increase over what they've been paying, because there hasn't been an increase in 32 years.
That's fire only, that's not...
That is fire only. This has nothing to do with police protection yet. We're just looking at fire right now. And in fact, I know the council and Chief Gregory and Mr. Doss, we've all had conversation. The police model has been the same as the fire model all these years. Does it, is police protection the same thing as fire protection? My thinking is, is you could have a jewelry store with millions of dollars maybe worth of inventory in a very small store, and it might make more sense to have a revenue-generated model for police protection, maybe, versus the square-footage thing with fire. Fire is more about looking after, being prepared to battle a fire, respecting improved space. The cost of being in that state of preparedness to fight a fire at Walmart, or the Performing Arts Center at West Virginia Wesleyan College is going to be different than some little tiny hole-in-the-wall place that, you know, might have 500 or 600 square feet. So I think, as I understand it, that's the model that the city mothers and fathers want to advance to change what we've been doing for the past 32 years, and go more to the Bridgeport model, which is the square-footage tiered model.
Off the subject, but just considering what you just said about maybe the police fees being based on a money raised or income-based fee, where would that information come from? It certainly won't come from the BNO taxes. Do we have a system to get that information from?
It would actually come from the BNO taxes. Every business is required to report, even if they go under that million-dollar threshold, and that's how we gather the data.
And we're really not as in critical position as we are with the fire department right now within the...
Oh, yeah, I understand that.
And with the Home Rule, one of our Home Rule pillars, we're also looking at the part-time officers within there, which still fits pretty much within their budget, except you're going to learn a little bit more about what they want for their budget here in the next few weeks.
Well, and if, Mr. Edwards, if you're looking at potentially substantially increasing the staffing with your fire department, I know that's one of the things that's being bandied about, if you're going to add two or three firefighters, that really would be the more pressing of the two. That's not to say that you can't put together a police ordinance pretty quickly, too, but my direction was fire is most important.
All right. Mr. Osborne, do you have a question, sir?
Yeah, I would just like to say, as a citizen, anytime my fees are raised, I get upset, but I understand their need. However, in this case, I'd just like to encourage Mr. Doss and city council to think about the future needs of the fire department, because if you raise the fees now, I'm okay with it. If you raise them again in five or six years, a lot more people would be upset. So make sure the limits you set now will carry as far into the future as possible. So just keep that in mind as you're considering these fees.
You bring up a really good point, Mr. Osborne. It's something we've been dealing with within a lot of other departments. It seems that we've waited, we have, it seems that governments have a habit of putting off and putting off, thinking that it's in the better good not to raise at a small minimum amount within a reasonable amount of time. What will end up happening, we'll wait until after 20, 30 years, until, oh, now we need to change the rate, then the rate's going to be a substantial one. It's not going to be something that can be gradually taken into your budget. So I think that's something that our departments are really working hard at, and I know this council would really like to address in the future, and we've all brought it up within our different boards on how that happens. And it's just a matter of, just like I saw in the paper today, that, what is it, the gas company, Mountaineer Gas, is raising theirs after two years, 4-point-something percent, adding an extra $30-some-odd dollars to your gas bill. And that's substantial for anybody with a rural budget, that has to live within the budget. And that's substantial for anybody with a rural budget that has to live within the budget. So, I guess the point I'm getting at is that you bring up a really good point, that you've got to have small increments to stay with. We think at this point, we could, we would say in the affirmative that yes, it's within a five-year plan that this amount would actually be able to facilitate it probably longer, once you adjust on the different businesses. Now, if we get bigger businesses in, then of course, you know, that could also change as well. But thank you for the question.
Well, I just have to say that if you go back and look at the income brought in from the fees in 1983 for both the fire and the police department, look at what their departmental costs were and what percentage was given to them based on the fire and police fee, you would be shocked about the way the percentages have changed today. And that's one of the issues that government agencies have to deal with, is you need increases in fees if you're going to continue the services. And the B and O tax, quite frankly, when we, was that implemented, David? 11 years ago, was it?
Oh, gosh. First one was back in the early 90s. But it's been a progressive expansion of it for the last 22, 23 years.
And the B and O taxes enabled us to sustain the fire and police department without increasing those fees. Is that a fair statement to make?
That's a fair statement.
As a fire department, the equipment alone, and the equipment alone and replacement costs of equipment has been going up and up and up and up and up. And we, as a city, have never really adjusted to that until now. And so, it sounds horrific, huge, like, you know, we're going to be sucking the life out of somebody. But really and truly, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing now, I think. Is that the right way of saying it, Michael? We're planning ahead for the future, I think.
Oh, sure we are. And the other statistic, which is, you know, mind-boggling to me is when Mr. Clement said there may be 150 unoccupied homes. That right there hits your impact as far as collection.
Well, there's another facet of this that I mentioned to Mr. Doss. The square footage model can help you with these properties that need to be raised. And here's why. Let's say I'm sitting there with this old place that I really should have torn down five years ago. And we know the places around town that are in that condition. And maybe you got 2,000 or 3,000 square feet, one of those old three-story places, and it's like, I'm going to have to pay what? And it's like, this is the time, it's going to make more sense for me now to raise that, invest the money in tearing it down so I won't have to pay those outrageous fire fees to the city of Buchanan. So, there is a little impetus there to, that you can, you know, use to help accomplish that other purpose.
I think I've done a great job of that, Mr. Doss.
What we're going to ask you to do is take a look at it, read through it, and bring it back on the 26th, and we'll discuss it more. I would almost like to put this as part of our town hall meeting. I know we want to get it through soon, but I feel that since it does affect the citizens in this way, that we should always give them the opportunity. And we're going to have our first town hall meeting. We'll talk about this later, we'll set a date. Or we could do that on next, at our next meeting as well.
Well, Mr. McCollough thought he'd have this ready in final form at the 5th. That's your goal, is that correct, David?
I can, but that's up to the council as to whether you want to proceed that quickly. I was being aggressive with February 5th and 19th as your two readings. And the other thing that I would mention to you is, I think I had it in one of the wherestes, but it's also worthy of repetition. I think Mr. Doss was trying to be sensitive to the budgeting process at places like Wesleyan and St. Joseph's Hospital, even Walmart, they've got budgets, to do this on a fast track, pass it twice in February and say, okay, in March, by golly, the money's going to be rolling in. That's really, that's a little bit unfair to the taxpayers and the fee. So, we had this set up to be, come effective July 1. That gives them a few months to start doing their rebudgeting process and knowing that there's going to be some increases coming.
All right. Well, any other questions for Mr. McCollough?
Thank you for explaining it so well.
All right, let's talk about that more in our next meeting. What we have next is no correspondence. Is there anything that anybody sees that should be taken off of the consent agenda? We have approval of the minutes, approval of the building, and wire permits, approval of payment of the bills, and notice of a special meeting of council on January 28th at 6:00 P.M.
26th, yes.
26th at 6:00 P.M. Did anybody want anything taken out of that agenda to discuss? All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All right, I have a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Strategic issues for discussion and vote. We have Resolution 2015-01, our first one, community participation grant of the mowing equipment. Mr. Doss, is that you, sir?
Yes, I'll take that, Mayor. If you all recall, in the summer, we had received a 2014 Governor's Community Participation Grant, I think from Senator Barnes at that time. The amount of that was $11,500. We were going to use that money to buy a zero-turn mower, which we have acquired. And actually, we have monies remaining that we did not expend. Jerry Arnold was in contact with folks from the governor's office. And basically, they told us if we had a resolution that council passed, we could make an activity change or a project change to that project and utilize that $2,800, that remaining balance, for additional mowing equipment and ground maintenance. They just need something from council making a request to change the scope of that activity. Then that frees up that remaining $2,800 for us to use. That's all.
Any questions for Mr. Dawson, Resolution 2015-01? Didn't understand what we're doing there. I would entertain a motion then to approve Resolution Number 2015-01.
I'll second.
I've got a motion, and I have a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. We have Resolution 2015-02, removal of the stoplights at Main Street and Canal Street. And I know we have somebody signed up to discuss that, but we'll let Mr. Doss explain the process here first.
There's several new members to council. But council in the past, as everyone knows, at the other traffic lights in town, had partnered up with the Department of Highways, and they had done a survey, a survey on traffic, traffic control, traffic flow. And it made an indication that if the city of Buchanan was willing, those lights could actually be flipped to a flashing light, if you will, to a four-way stop. Council at that time gave their blessing for the Department of Highways to implement that on those three intersections. And ultimately, everybody knows the story behind that. Then there was a discussion after a period of time of those lights being four-way stops. There were some issues from the public. And there was a determination made by council to go ahead and actually remove those flashing lights and put a more defined stop sign up there to not confuse individuals. Department of Highways requested that we pass a resolution, Mr. Thomas, I'm sure you recall that, that would authorize and permit and give council's blessing for the Department of Highways to actually remove those flashing stoplights, which they've subsequently done. The next, the next item was to take a look at the corner of Canal and Main Street. And then it was council's desire at that time to proceed with having those lights, traffic lights turned to flashing stoplights. And ultimately, that's where we're at today. Department of Highways had made a request with Jerry Arnold to see if we were interested, if council was interested in actually having those lights removed, like we've done the other lights. And then this is just a resolution, basically, it needs to be in place, that council's supporting the removal of those stoplights at the intersection of Main and Canal, which would complete the stops throughout that portion of downtown Buchanan.
Very good. Does everybody on council understand what Mr. Doss is speaking of? This has previously been done by most of the councils before us. I will recognize Mrs. Strickland, is it?
Yes, sir.
To discuss whatever you'd like to discuss with us on that.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm a Buchanan resident, grew up here, remember? The bustling downtown, Liberty Lunch, Maggie's. I mean, you come downtown and just enjoy yourself for the day. It's epic. And it has distressed me greatly, taking out the stoplights. I personally wouldn't feel bad sitting at a stoplight and looking around in shop windows, see what's changed, who's got a sale. It keeps, keeps me, I'm a shopper. I'm not a professional like most of you, but I am a shopper. It's distressed me seeing the public parking kind of going away. Got a $25 ticket for parking in what I thought was a gigantic parking lot down behind the Chinese restaurant, but it's private, too. Not talking about parking, but talking about shopping. And I personally feel like that without the stoplights, the town is less safe for pedestrians. I think that pedestrian, pedestrian traffic on Main Street is critical for the shopping Main Street experience. You know, just pulling up in front of a store, finding a space right in front of the store isn't realistic. The only one that I saw with the actual crosswalk is the one in front of the courthouse, which is the biggest intersection and not my favorite one. If I'm crossing the street, got to run. I mean, it's just, for someone even older, I don't think it would be, I feel like that people are kind of being strayed away from downtown, talking about shortcuts, the confusion of all the different lights. I've avoided downtown. I know how to do that. I'm not sure if that's the goal, if you don't, if you just want people to just zip through town, bypass kind of situation. I think a couple of blocks away, we've got one. It's called I-79 and 33 or whatever. You know, the interstate, excuse me, it is 33 there. But it's just, it's been very distressing for me just as a shopper and a citizen in town to see the stoplights go away. I came through there today, looking again at the situation. I see the stop signs, quite frankly, they're almost an eyesore, all the stop signs. Yesterday, I was coming toward City Hall, and I saw a gigantic truck. Didn't even slow down at the Canal intersection that you're talking about with the flashing light. So, I'm not sure if they're confused about what a flashing light means, if more stop signs will make a difference. But I liked having stoplights. For me, the merit of a town is how many stoplights do you have? Are you a one-stop-light town? I took great pride in that we were a four-stop-light town. And to take them away, just, where'd they go? And where'd the money go? I've heard all kinds of people talking about it, and none of it's been positive.
Thank you very much. And you actually represent a lot of people that feel that way about downtown. So, let's see for stepping up and addressing that as far as a lot of people are concerned. Unfortunately, I wasn't around before when the decisions were made, but I do recall when it was done, and I know traffic flow was a main concern. Pedestrian safety still does maintain a high priority for us. And we'll discuss that here in a moment. I added something to your packet. Dennis, you had something to say, sir?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you for recognizing me. Up until about a month ago, we had a blind lady living on Thurman Avenue that would walk her leader dog downtown. And more than once, the dog would go to cross the street and get lost because there's no clues or cues for the leader dog to see with the stop signs. Before, when they had a stoplight, you could push the button, and the dog is trained to read the, read the lights and then take the person across. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you for that. And you bring up a very valid point as well. How about the members of council? You got anything you want to say on this subject?
Well, I've been around the council for a while. Mrs. Strickland, it was the observations you've made. There were individuals that felt that removing the lights would actually provide a better pedestrian environment than having, having the traffic lights. Because if you hit the traffic lights just at the right time, you can zip right on through town and not, as you say, stop at a stoplight and look at the different shops and so forth. I think, you know, my concern with when we did this initially is how would people that did not have any vision handle the not having the stoplight? And I've talked to several, and they had some concerns, but they felt that they could, you know, work with it. So, I've had a lot of comments on this. About 90% of the people I've talked to, which is not a lot of people, but, you know, enough that they like the stop signs rather than the traffic lights. But the problem we have, unfortunately, we just have a lot of people that don't pay any attention to anything, whether it's a stoplight or a traffic light. And, you know, example of that truck. I mean, I think the, I think the police ought to have a greater presence in our downtown. You know, whether it's enforcing the stop signs or enforcing the cell phone regulations or, you know, we just need to have people be aware of what they're doing to their fellow citizens by not observing laws. And, you know, I think the goal was to improve and enhance the downtown by removing the flashing lights in the, in the stoplights. I still think that's a laudable goal, but we still need to, you know, improve in what we're doing.
We absolutely do. Anybody else?
Please.
Yes. One measure of safety that has come about because of removal of the stoplights is the huge trucks that go through town now are required to stop every block. Before, if the light was yellow, they were speeding up to beat the yellow. And that created a real traffic or hazard to the pedestrians, especially in downtown Buchanan. Now that they are required to stop, except for the one that you saw there, and I've seen that happen, too, not just with trucks, but with other drivers, too, that just don't stop. And I think that's just a matter of fact that they are not familiar with what laws govern driving, not just in Buchanan, but in other cities and states. They're all practically the same. But I do believe that the removal of the stoplights and going to the stop signs has created a safer environment in downtown Buchanan because of the traffic flow, the heavy trucks that go through. And believe me, that was a concern because I've stopped on Main Street and watched as many as 15 trucks in a 15-to-20-minute area go through town, and all of them almost speeding up to beat the yellow. So, I think it's become safer. And that was my, my concern. However, at the, when we voted to do away with the stoplights, I voted against it because my constituents wanted me to do that. By my vote of like 25 to 19, that we're in favor of keeping the stoplights. So, that's the way I voted. I vote the way my constituents do most of the time. But I'm very thankful that we've done away with the stoplights, and I would hate to see us go back to another way.
You know, I can't remember, Mr. McCollough, how long ago you had made this suggestion about getting a second Main Street. Is my mind, is my mind wrong there?
No, that's probably been, I don't know, 15, 15 years ago, maybe? I don't know, back in the 90s.
But that was to provide even a greater environment for Buchanan and downtown, a traffic pattern that would be very good for it. And that's still something that maybe 50 years from now will be done.
I like that. Elkins downtown with the two Main Streets, seems like they have right there.
What about you ladies?
I just want to say that I, until probably the last year and a half, I was never one of these people that got outwalked down Main Street very much. I do now. And I can tell you that I do enjoy, not enjoy, I do like the stop signs. What I don't like is people who are inconsiderate, okay? And it's the inconsiderate, unsafe drivers that are causing these issues downtown. And that's, that's all it is in a nutshell. Because I watch them, and I want to yell out at them, "You idiot, why don't you stop?" You know? But I can't do that. Well, I do do that, but anyways. So, I'm asking everybody. So, I'm asking everybody that's a driver in Upsher County to pay attention to common courtesy and safety and driving etiquette when you're driving down Main Street, when you're driving anywhere. There's children out there. There's school buses that run down that Main Street that still stop today to let children off.
Try the corner of Hart and Smith.
You know, I just, I like it like it is. Now, Rose Claude is gonna shoot me. She hates it, you know, but she's a creature of habit. And then, and she's a wonderful person, as you are, okay? But she just does not like change. And we're working hard to rebuild and change the image of our downtown, our historic downtown area, and slowing the traffic down and bringing people out there. And I see, I've seen the change. I've seen more people walking, and even when it's cold, and I like it.
Thank you, Mary. How about you, Robyn?
Well, I guess I've got to disagree. I don't like the stop sign being taken down. I think it's our job as council to look out for the safety of everyone, whether anyone driving is smart enough to know what to do at a four-way intersection. For those that won't do it, it's our obligation to make sure that anyone walking is safe. And that's what I worry about, is who is not going to pay attention. Also, I worry about Main Street disappearance. What are we doing to it? Are we making it a freeway? Go straight down Main Street, zoom. If I had a business downtown, I'd be really upset if I put a lot of energy into my windows trying to promote my business, and the cars were flying down to fat, they didn't turn around and look. So, that's my opinion.
All right. Those are well, I'll give one myself. As far as pedestrian safety goes, we've got a few, quite a few options that I feel that when we go into budget talks, that one of the main priorities we should look at is at the end of your packet, you'll see an LED lighting system that is actually pedestrian crossing. It can be solar or it has the button, and it flashes LED lights. I mean, you're not going to miss this thing. And we can have them on each one of the four corners. They are not inexpensive, particularly if you wanted to go with a solar one, which would of course take no energy from our parts. To do this, I have already engaged Engineer Holland, Jay Holland, to discuss with the DOH on actually putting these in. If we wanted to put these in, we have to put in, we have to require a request from them. They have to give us permission because that is a state road. But it would be my suggestion, and as we go through, I've heard the calls from the citizens, particularly our pedestrians walking downtown. I walk downtown quite a bit doing business for the city. I, being a larger fellow, can just step out into the traffic, and most cars aren't going to try to hit me. They don't want to, you know, deal with the damage. But if you are in any way, in a disabled capacity or challenged, it is very difficult. And I've sat out here, and like you, Mary, I wanted to go out here and just stop the traffic to allow somebody to go across. There's a gentleman, a citizen, that's in a wheelchair that has a battle just to get across that street. This is activated by button. If you would have missed that, and you couldn't see that somebody's walking across, then you really shouldn't be driving your car at all as it is. Is there any other discussions on that? I am going to put this in the budget as one of my priorities for...
I've a matter of levity, Miss.
A levity?
Yeah.
Really?
I was...
Levity?
Well, yes, it's kind of levity-ing, or is that a word even? Anyway, I was at the corner here, Main Street and Spring Street, and a gentleman on a bicycle was coming up Main Street. And he was sitting there, as he should, debating the laws, just as the automobiles. And a car comes down Main Street, does not stop, goes right on through and everything, and this gentleman on the bicycle yelled, "You idiot! That's a stop sign!" And I said, "Hey, buddy, way to go, way to tell him." He said, "Yes, and I'm gonna tell him later because he works for me." So, people are looking out, and people do. I tell people on Main Street, when I see them breaking the law, hey, you know. So, anyway, I yell a little bit. I know it's hard to believe, isn't it?
Mary, they do have a lot of these things like this in larger cities where traffic is a big, huge problem, but they try to make the crossing of the streets easier for the pedestrians, and then it helps slows the traffic too a little bit because they know that they have to stop.
Yeah, I think this would be a big difference.
Yeah.
I think it would as well. So, I want you guys to consider that. But what would, what's the pleasure as far as the council goes with Resolution Number 2015-02?
Sir, I would make the motion that we go along and pass Resolution 2015-02, removal of the stoplight at Main and Canola Street.
All right, I have a motion to pass Resolution Number 2015-02. Do I have a second? We can have a discussion, but do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second, so we can continue the discussion if you want.
Now, you're talking about the big intersection?
No, the Canola Street.
Oh, Canola, oh, right there.
We already have stop signs there.
Yeah, okay.
We've never...
It's just the only flashing light.
Yeah, that's the only flashing one now. Okay, yes, okay.
So, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion?
Call for question.
All right, I have a call for a question from Mr. Pugh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post sign, motion carries. We have Resolution 2015-02. Before I do that, thank you, Mrs. Strickland, for coming in.
Your memories of downtown Buchanan are just wonderful, and that's what I'd love to see Buchanan become again, was a place where we could sit on the streets and talk to our neighbors and...
Talk restaurant, drink coffee that way.
Yes, I think we all had the same goal, but I just...
How you get there.
I didn't think, you know, getting into crosswalks was really the way to go about it, having the guidance of the... People just seemed to respect the stoplights more than the stop signs, and rather than trying to change everybody, I just wanted it to be safe.
I had a suggestion this week from somebody that suggested we pull up the asphalt and the blacktop off of Main Street, down to the brick that was there beforehand, and change the speed limit to 15 down Main Street, and just have it a beautiful brick-bathed street all the way from about 20 all the way to City Hall.
When I worked in town, they added in a brick section in between their stoplights. They didn't take their stoplights out, but they made an additional crosswalk to enhance their downtown area.
A lot more traffic too.
Just be glad we did put in those roustabouts, and then what'd they call them?
Roundabouts?
Safe to say that the council recognizes pedestrian safety concerns downtown, and we are going to do everything we can do to help facilitate a much safer pedestrian and bicycle downtown.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Simons.
I'm sorry, Rob. I think he insulted you, but I'll take that compliment. Speaking of crosswalks, what about in front of the post office and... Every time they have a viewing at Boling Sinclair, I hate to drive up that way because you're not supposed to be making noise in front of a funeral home anyway, but I've actually gotten in the habit of putting my window down so that I can talk to the people that are attempting to run through the crosswalks. And a lot of the people going to the funeral homes for the viewing are elderly. You don't know how many times I have seen, you don't know how many times I've called the call center and said, "I have a license number. I just saw this person blow through the crosswalk in front of Boling's, and they've got flashing lights there when they have a viewing, so you know, you know, prepare to slow down and maybe stop." And somebody is going to get killed up there if not manned.
Bring up a good point, and I've... That's something we can bring up as far as the pedestrian crossings, since there is already a warning sign at pedestrian crossings, light there or sign, maybe we can put up one of these LEDs there. That's not a bad idea.
But there are marked crosswalks at all intersections downtown too.
But if you're not from here, you wouldn't realize that that is actually a special situation.
I think you would, because every city in the nation has marked crosswalks.
It's just people don't pay attention.
They don't pay attention.
All right. Let's move on to Resolution 2015-03, the general fund budget revision, FYR 2014-15. Mr. Doss?
Yes, it's about this time every fiscal year that we do kind of a mid-year, if you will, budget resolution, and that's what we're doing at this point. There's really nothing that sticks out, kind of feel compelled to advise you of. A couple of interesting things. The mayor's repave sanitary is an actual old line that we've been budgeting for several years. That is in relation to the sewer lines, infrastructure that was put out at Lowe's. We're no longer repaying that back, so I actually zeroed out that line as part of my revision. And also a line on the second page in the fire department's contract of hydrants. We don't do that after we did our water rate increase. That actually has been included in our water rate increase, so I actually zeroed out that line as well. And with zeroing out those two lines and making revisions off of that, what actually ends up being about $84,000, I was able to use that $84,000 and shift that around to other various lines within this respective department. So, essentially, what I'm telling you is with this budget revision, we did not in any way increase our budget. We just shifted some things around to clean up some line items along the way, and this is something that we do at this point every year. You'll have another budget revision in the end of the next quarter of the fiscal year. But for now, that's really the only significant thing I have to report out of this, the lines that we're increasing are not, excuse me, very significant, with the exception of the council capital outlay, and that was just remaining monies that we had out of that $84,000 once we did our revisions. I just put into council capital outlay that we can utilize it at any other point. Maybe we can get the mayor's crosswalk lights or something out of that. Anyway, that is the budget resolution as presented, and I just, that's my recommendation. Council prove it, but I will need a roll call vote.
He doesn't really get an option, the opportunity a lot to go through all those great ideas you've called for, so we got to allow him...
You haven't yet made a motion, has I mentioned it?
I'm ready to make the motion.
I'll second.
I will entertain the motion. I have a motion by Mr. Pugh. I have a second by Mrs. Alba. Is there any discussion on...
Call for question.
Mr. Pugh calls for the question. The question is to approve Resolution 2015-03, the general fund budget revision for 2014, 2015. All in favor, say aye. Roll call. It's a roll call. Any may call the roll, please.
Robin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Thanks.
Being a unanimous vote, it is approved. The next thing we have is Resolution 2015-04. I do like resolutions, by the way. LWCF city matching funds. Mr. Doss?
Yes. This is just federal bureaucracy at its finest. We did pass a resolution when we applied for this land and water conservation grant. It showed them that we had dedicated, that if we applied for the grant, we would assist with the 50% required match. For some reason, they want another resolution that tells them that we are still going to do that, and we have that in our budget, which I will remind you, we do have in our budget, that amount of $67,017. So, this is just basically telling the federal government, Department of Interior, that we do have that money appropriated for that program. And again, that program is the handicraft equipment and improvements to North Buchanan Park.
As much as I have asked for the ADA compliant equipment to be installed over there, I would make the motion that we accept and pass Resolution 2015-04.
I have a motion to pass Resolution 2015-04. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Any discussion on that?
Roll call.
Oh, that's a roll call. Second time around on that one.
Start the other day.
Yes.
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 Mary?
Yes.
And Robin?
Yes.
Being unanimous decision, our motion does pass.
Unanimous.
Okay, we have under comments and announcements at this point, so we need to start off with Mrs. Alba today.
I really didn't mean to be so mean to all the citizens out there when I started ranting and raving about poor driving etiquette and that kind of stuff, but when you see youngsters and elderly people and people with walkers and people in wheelchairs, it kind of gets your blood pressure steaming, even blind people, okay? So, I just beg your forgiveness if I've offended you, but I ask you please to drive safely and be courteous. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mary. Mr. Pugh?
I have no comments, except I hope everybody enjoys the upcoming snow we're going to get in the next week or two. And we're due, so let's have it, and God bless.
All right, Mr. Thomas, how about you, sir?
No comments.
Huh?
Geez.
Mr. Thomas with no comments. Thank you, sir. Mrs. Simons?
Well, I'd just like to say that I don't, I'm not against change. I embrace change. I just worry about the safety of our citizens, and with the light that the mayor has presented or has signed, I think that the, it'll be a lot better for people wherever walking or even driving. So, I think we're moving forward.
Thank you, Robin. Appreciate that. I have a few comments or things for you to take into consideration in the next few weeks. Myself, Ron, and Mary attended a beginning investigatory meeting on an art program that's a Buchanan public art program. It's been initiated by a local group. They have introduced the idea that the city of Buchanan have public art within the open spaces that a lot of cities have incorporated within their programs. That would be anything from temporary art to permanent art to building mural, you name it, they're discussing it. The city, I believe, and I've talked with Ron and Mary, actually support this program, think it's actually a great idea, particularly as we're headed into the 2016 year. I would like to ask you to keep that in your mind and consideration. There have been articles in the paper that are going to be hearing more about it. What we will end up doing is coming to you with a letter of support, maybe by the 26th, to the group, supporting this as a city is just a letter of support. Ultimately, they would like to have us, if everything works out and all the planets align right, we could have a resolution to them that the city of Buchanan will support in a much more direct way. But we will hold off on that, just introducing that to you and to the citizens. The city is listening and prepared for that. Speaking of the 200th anniversary, we have that coming up next year. I would like to see us as a city start determining and planning how we would like to celebrate that as a bicentennial, it's a very special year. My first thought, of course, when I was a kid, when it was 1976, but I recall what a big issue that was, and it was a year-long celebration. I would like to encourage our citizens and our council to get involved with the organization to determine how we could actually best celebrate that year next year. Having said that, it moves me on to the seventh most beautiful city that the Upsher County Development Authority has been working on. We have been elected to that or appointed into that prestigious account. The development authority threw out an email asking that everybody that was involved come up with a plan that would help facilitate the 2016 celebration and this seventh best whatever, some sort of a contest. I would propose that the city support the art project as being that type of a project that we would go with on that. Which brings us to the seventh most beautiful city in one other way. I bet you guys were introduced in the articles to a certain recreation complex. The city of Buchanan has taken upon itself to design. It's a dream. It's a field of dreams, but it's a dream that's been worked on in this county and this community for quite a few years. It is a much-needed project. Can we afford it? Can the whole community afford it? Depends on how much you want to pay for it, or how much you want to help contribute to that goal. Please stand, be aware of that. There will be more to come on that. As we move to the next issue that I want to talk to you about, we will be heading down to see our legislators in three weeks, two or three weeks, however many weeks it is. I would encourage that each of you take the opportunity to talk to your delegates about each one of these projects and from within your boards. Each one of you that sit on a board have probably got some issues that you would want to talk with your delegates about. Michael Doss and I will be taking the opportunity to do that as well. But on top of that, in March, we will be going to the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, DC. We will be taking a few of the problems that we have or issues from our city and a couple of the departments, and we will bring in for the recreation complex and art program as well, and soliciting their participation in our 2016 program. If we can get it out there early enough, it's in their minds, they may remember it, they may come down and celebrate with us. Last but not least, our town hall. I would ask that the council come up with a date by our meeting on the 26th, to have a town hall meeting in February. I will leave it up to you to determine if you want to have it in between councils. I would not suggest... I would not suggest making it a council meeting because we already have enough business to do. This would be a special meeting, town hall meeting. There would be no decisions made, but it would give the opportunity for the citizens of Buchanan or the surrounding community to address some issues like the fire fee, the BNO tax, the art project, rent complex, anything else that they would like to bring up. So, that's what I have. I appreciate everyone being here tonight. I appreciate the work of this council and of our city employees. Is there any other questions or comments from this council before I adjourn?
Well, yeah, I guess I do have a comment.
All right, Mr. Thomas?
You know, when you mentioned the recreational complex, there's a couple of things that come to my mind very quickly. And Mr. McCollough will remember this also, is that when we developed the Stocker News Center from the county commission, we at one time talked about a capital campaign. And I still think that is a long-term goal for us, so you put it in the field of dreams to have a capital campaign for Stocker. I think that's something that we'll look at. And when we talk about the downtown, I think we've got to have a plan to do something with the Spring Street property there that we acquired. And, you know, maybe we need to have a little park there. Talked about Mrs. Strickland wanting to talk to people and have lunch somewhere or so, whatever. Not only Joel Bone, but maybe something right in the center of town.
Gotcha. That has been discussed before, yeah, quite a bit. So, I've been asked to think about re-engaging the park committee we have. I would actually suggest that if we're going to proceed further and want to do some of the suggestions you're doing, we actually have a park board that actually has some authority or some influence on perhaps an audit designed for parks. That's something to think about down the road. Thank you for that. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do you move?
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed say a sign. We are adjourned, folks. Thank you very much.